The March first city council meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Dr. Thomas E. Hunter, pastor Macedonia Seventeenth Street Baptist Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Great God, we come to you in this appointed hour, beseeching thy mercy and thy grace, asking if thou would create within each of us clean hearts, O God, and sustain us with thy Holy Spirit. Then let the words of our mouth and the meditations of our hearts always be acceptable in thy sight, O Lord, our strength and our redeemer. We come to you, O great God, asking for help as we embrace the dark shadows of our city's past, as we accept and embrace the brightness of our present, and as we look for even a brighter future. We're asking that you would hover over this city, protect this city from all hurt, harm, and danger. We're asking you that you would give the mayor clarity and this council clarity, that they may make the decisions which are for the betterment of the citizens of the city of Birmingham. We ask that you would forgive us of our sins and cleanse us from all unrighteousness as we stand before you as justified creatures. Now, Lord, we're asking that this council proceeding on today, where bear the sentiments of the prophet Micah, let justice run down like water, and let righteousness run down as a mighty stream. We pray this prayer in the name of your son, Jesus. We ask all these things and others, amen.
Amen. Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the robe, Mr. Clerk. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember Lundey.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Morning.
Morning. President Pro Tim Roberson.
Present.
Councilmember Rafferty. Councilmember Skiles.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present.
Morning, Mr. Clerk.
Good morning. Minutes are not ready from December eighth through February twenty-third. We have announcements in Boris and Agencies?
Yes, sir. I have two vacancies. Let me get Council Tyson in right quick. We have downtown redevelopment authority Desiree C. Alexander. Term expires April eighth, two thousand sixteen. It is a six-year term, and it is under the Economic Development Budget and Finance Committee. We also have the Industrial Development Board, Kurt Atkinson, and also Edward E. May the second. Both terms expire April the tenth, two thousand sixteen. They are six-year terms, and also Economic Development and Budget and Finance Committee appointments.
Okay. All right. All right, the consideration of the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, I'm gonna have to go a little slower here. She's having to reboot her computer for me. All right, consent agenda starts with items one and two, with one being added during pre-council meeting. We have items four, five, and six on consent. And we skip over to page seven. We have items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two on consent.
You said on page six, item seventeen.
Did I miss six? That's right.
Yep.
I didn't mention it, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And then seven is item nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two.
Yep. Then we go to page eight. We have item twenty-five being added and items twenty-six and twenty-seven on consent.
What now, Mr. Clerk?
Item twenty-five was added and twenty-six and twenty-seven are on consent.
Okay.
Page nine, we have items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two on consent. Page ten, we have items thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight on consent. Page eleven, we have items thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four on consent. Page fifteen, twelve, I'm sorry, we have items forty-five and forty-six and forty-seven on consent. Forty-six was added to the consent agenda. And again, on page twelve, item forty-seven, it should be recommended by the purchasing agent and not the director of finance on item forty-seven. Page thirteen, we added items fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two to the consent agenda. And I think that concludes the consent agenda.
Do we have any member of the council which should speak to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President.
Council Hoyt?
Yes, if we could add item one to the consent.
It's on there.
No, item one is not on consent.
Yeah, we added it during pre-council.
Oh, excuse me.
You got any more?
Well, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-five he has, twenty-four is not. And there was an objection in twenty-four.
Who objected?
I did.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to hear what the point is.
Oh.
What is it doing?
All right, you have any more? Mr. Pro Tim?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Number two, I want to make sure that we had added item three.
It's on there. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item three?
Yeah.
He didn't call it.
Go ahead.
Okay. And then I did see in the addendum packet the list of travel for item fifty-five.
I'm okay with that.
So we'll add item fifty-five on the addendum. Okay.
Give me one second.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I got all about those addendum items. So we just added fifty-five?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You have the members of the council which should speak to the consent agenda? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the council agenda marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. There any members of the council which should speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. We have a move and a second on the consent agenda?
I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Roberson.
Abbott. Roberson. Okay. Voting should be open. Yes, Councilmember Hoyt. Thank you, sir. The vote should be up.
That consent agenda passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk, should be item seven.
An ordinance to amend the business license code of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three, as amended to add an additional NAICS-ICS subsector in corresponding license schedule for fuel pipeline facility to Article One Schedule of Business Licenses, NAICS Sector four ninety-three, warehousing and storage.
President, I can move the item.
Second.
Roberson, Abbott, do we have any speakers to this?
That's for UC.
Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye for UC.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, now.
Roberson moved it second. Roberson, Austin. Do we have any council members which should speak to this item? We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Okay.
Item seven.
All right, voting starts now. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Call up item eight through sixteen.
Eight through sixteen. Item eight. An ordinance authorize the mayor upon receipt of payment in amount of two thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed that should be claimed to the Salvation Army for the sale of property legally described as lots one through twelve, block two ninety, according to the survey North Birmingham recorded in mapbook one, page one eleven, city account fifty-seven eighty-three, and located at nineteen oh seven twenty-sixth Avenue North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Item nine, an ordinance authorize the mayor upon receipt of payment in amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents to execute a quick claim deed to the Salvation Army for the sale of property legally described as lots one through twelve, block two ninety, according to the survey of North Birmingham, recorded in the mapbook one, page one eleven, city account fifty-seven eighty-four, and located at nineteen oh seven twenty-sixth Avenue North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Item ten, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to, upon receipt of payment in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents to execute a quick claim deed to Salvation Army for the sale of property legally described as lots one through twelve, block two ninety, according to the survey North Birmingham recorded in mapbook one, page one eleven, city account fifty-seven eighty-five, and located at nineteen oh seven twenty-sixth Avenue North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Item eleven, an ordinance authorize the mayor that, upon receipt of payment in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents to execute a quick claim deed to the Salvation Army for the sale of property legally described as lots one through twelve, block two ninety, according to the survey of North Birmingham recorded in mapbook one, page one eleven, city account fifty-seven eighty-six, and located at nineteen oh seven twenty-sixth Avenue North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Item twelve, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to, upon receipt of payment in amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents to execute a quick claim deed to Salvation Army for the sale of property legally described as lots one through twelve, block two ninety, according to the survey of North Birmingham, recorded in mapbook one, page one eleven, city account fifty-seven eighty-seven, and located at nineteen oh seven twenty-sixth Avenue North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Item thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents to execute a quick claim deed to Salvation Army for the sale of property legally described as lots one through twelve, block two ninety, according to the survey of North Birmingham recorded in mapbook one, page one eleven, city account fifty-seven eighty-eight, and located at nineteen oh seven twenty-sixth Avenue North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Item fourteen, an ordinance authorize the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents to execute a quick claim deed to the Salvation Army for the sale of property legally described as lots one through twelve, block two ninety, according to the survey of North Birmingham, recorded in mapbook one, page one eleven, city account fifty-seven eighty-nine, and located at nineteen oh seven twenty-sixth Avenue North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. And item fifteen, an ordinance authorize the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents to execute a quick claim deed to Salvation Army for the sale of property legally described as lots one through twelve, block two ninety, according to the survey of North Birmingham recorded in mapbook one, page one eleven, city account fifty-seven ninety, and located at nineteen oh seven twenty-sixth Avenue North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. And item sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents to execute a quick claim deed to Salvation Army for the sale of property legally described as lots one through twelve, block two ninety, according to the survey of North Birmingham recorded in mapbook one, page one eleven, city account fifty-seven ninety-one, and located at nineteen oh seven twenty-sixth Avenue North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second. It's for UC.
All in favor, I'm sorry.
Do you?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's for UC.
Mr. Roberson. Second. Roberson, Austin. For eight through fifteen, eight through sixteen. Do we have any speakers to these items? Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting should be open. Councilmember Tyson left. That vote should be up for all of those items.
Those items pass. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Should be item eighteen. An ordinance authorizing the council president to sign the contract of master solution LLC and the lobbyist registration document directing the mayor to advance said contract and document to all appropriate staff and ensure that the administrative measures are completed and in manner to procure the services contracted. UC.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. Then item, next item.
Okay, we go to item twenty-one.
Mr. President, I thought this item was read on last week, and it required UC last week. And so it didn't make it last week, so I thought it was coming up today for up and down both.
No, we talked about it during pre-council. It was printed, and so it had to be all over. Take it up next week. Go ahead.
All right, item twenty-one, a resolution approving agreement with the Bloom Group Incorporated, Montgomery, Alabama, for the term not to exceed one year in an amount not to exceed one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to provide representation and assistance to the city in connection with governmental issues, legislation, proposed legislation, other matters before the Alabama legislature and other government-related services for the benefit of the city of Birmingham, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. Move that we refer this to Economic Development Budget and Finance.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
I second it. Austin Hoyt.
Voting should be open. Missing councilmember Tyson's. That vote should be up.
That item passes. One no vote will be referred to the committee. Next item.
Should be item number twenty-three. A resolution appointing Nikita Consultancy LLC to develop, manage, and execute a comprehensive communications, neighborhood relations, and community affairs strategy for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute the appointment on behalf of the city.
Move the item.
Second.
Will you refer this to Economic Development Budget and Finance? Who did that first motion? Lundey, Skiles. And then I had a motion refer it to the committee.
Second.
That was the second about Lundey.
What's the committee?
Economic Development Budget and Finance.
Thanks, sir. That vote should be open. Councilmember Abbott. That vote should be up.
All right, that item be referred to the committee. Next item.
Should be item twenty-four. A resolution request the mayor implement the council's recommendation to send two representatives per neighborhood plus the NUSA board members and candidates for the NUSA board offices to the NUSA conference to be held May the twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, in Memphis, Tennessee.
Move the item.
Second.
Oh, shit.
Hoyt.
Move it up.
You have a speaker, Mr. President. Councilor Abbott?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, the reason that we're recommending two is because it's in Memphis and we can go by bus? So that's because we can save money. So close. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
All right, we're ready to vote. Oh, Tyson, do you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to say, it really shouldn't make a difference whether it was in Memphis or not, because everyone need training.
Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
Let me, let me say this to.
Council Hoyt?
I know it's close by, but you know, seventy-five percent of our officers are seniors or better. And so if one of them wants to fly, I think we may need that open to the administration to decide on what that needs to be. Quite frankly.
Okay. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
I'll delay to vote Council Tyson.
Council Tyson. Hoyt, you need to vote.
Let me vote for you.
All right, that item passes. Next item.
Let's see. Forty-eight?
Um, yeah, forty-eight, forty-nine, That's it. Forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty-four.
Item forty-eight. A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Gregory D. Jones, assistant to the mayor, mayor's office, Atlanta, Georgia. No amount, February the seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, to February the eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency group meeting. Ashonda Skiles, councillor, city council, Cambridge, Massachusetts. Three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seven cents. February the sixth through the thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Harvard Kennedy School Executive Education Leading Economic Growth. Item forty-nine, a resolution approving the following advanced expense account. April Odom, director of communications, mayor's office, Washington District, Columbia. One thousand five hundred and eight dollars and twenty-five cents. March the first through the third, two thousand and sixteen, to attend meeting for Birmingham Civil Rights Legislation. Item fifty-four, which is addendum item. A resolution approving the following advanced expense account. Jonathan Austin, council president, city council, Bremen, Frankfurt, Germany. One thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents. March the eighth through the thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend foreign investment recruitment meetings. Rendell and High. Administrative assistant to the mayor, mayor's office, Portland, Oregon. Two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. April the thirteenth through the seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend National Forum for Black Public Administrators Forum. Courtney Hunter, committee assistant, city council, Montgomery, Alabama. Four hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. March the first, third, two thousand and sixteen, to attend legislative session. William Parker, council, city council, Washington District, Columbia. One thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. March the first through the third, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency meetings. William Parker, city council, Washington, DC. One thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. March the seventh through the ninth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency meetings. Jose Perry, committee assistant, city council, Washington, DC. Two thousand six hundred and one dollars and eighty-two cents. March the fourth through the ninth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend National League of Cities. James Roberson, council pro tem, city council, Washington, DC. Two thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. March the sixth through the tenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend National League of Cities. Attorney Rubio, council attorney, city council, Bremen, Frankfurt, Germany. One thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents. I'm sorry, we got a correction to that amount. Should be three thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. March the eighth through the thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend foreign investment recruitment meetings.
And how much was that again?
Three thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-six cents.
And we can spell his name right, right?
Did they spell it right?
Sigfredo is his name.
That's his, that's his real name, yes.
Yeah, but there's no.
That's why I said attorney.
The F, the F is missing.
Is there a F missing?
Yeah, Sigfredo. Like, that's why they call him Freddie.
S-I-G-F? Okay, we got it. Council Parker?
Parker, Austin.
Voting should be open. Call Judge King's office. Councilmember Hoyt, councilmember Lundey, and Council Tyson. Lundey stepped out, okay. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
You can call Barrett's office and see if they'll send somebody. Three two five five five. They all work together.
That vote is up, Mr. President.
All right, item passes. One no vote for Council Abbott. Next item.
Um, you got the mayor's report.
All right, let's go to the mayor's report. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
March was celebration of Women's History Month. This month, we want to share her story. March marks the celebration of Women's History Month. This month, we want to share her story. So we will be making an effort to celebrate the vast achievements of women. If Chief Gordon is president, I'd like for him to come down, and we know that Chief Gordon is... Well, come on, chief, I won't even go there. And also Teresa De Leon.
What's the location?
I've asked chief to come down to be with one of our outstanding public safety individuals who, upon her own self, not in the line of duty, but she stepped up to be a heroine. Some of you may have seen the news story of Teresa, a Birmingham firefighter rescuing a man from a burning car while off duty. Today, we want to recognize her for her act of heroism and for blazing a trail in the Birmingham Fire Department for future generations. Teresa, I know that the fire chief is proud of you, the mayor is proud of you, and I'm certain that the family members of the person that you saved are forever grateful to you. We want to take this opportunity to recognize you and to say thank you for living up to the standards of all Birmingham firefighters. Chief?
As many of you, good morning. Good morning to the mayor, good morning to the council. As many of you have read on Saturday, Teresa was traveling on I-65 southbound and came upon a wreck where she initially thought was a grass fire was a little bit more. Actually, a person had left the roadway and crashed, and there was an explosion. Well, she told me walking over that she did what any firefighter would do, but yes, we do train, but we don't train to come upon a wreck and to act in that way. She was able to take her firefighter gear to provide protection, to cover the victim. She also was able to go into her EMT training and to cut away burning clothing to slow the burning process. We hope that what she done was a part of, the first part of his recovery, and we're in prayer that he will fully recover to, from his accident. And Teresa, would you like to say something?
Well, good morning. I wasn't expecting.
Uh, I wasn't expecting to come up here this morning. And I didn't tell anyone in regards to this, cause like I said, as firefighters, this is what we do every day. Uh, if it's car wrecks, house fires, overdose, this is what we're trained to do. So, um, I'm just thankful there was other hands-on at that time, cause it takes more than one person to do what we did, to carry him up from the ditch and take care of what needs to be taken care of at that time. So it was just, I was in the mode already of a rescue, rescue mode, get your gears, get my gear on and do my training of what we do out in the field with the experience that we run on calls, so, um, you know, I'm just, I'm just being mindful of what, like I said, what we do every day, and we see the worst of the worst. Um, it's not the worst I've seen unfortunately, but, uh, we just have to be prayerful for the family that he recovers from that, so, but thank you.
Mayor Bell? Teresa? Yes, Mayor Bell? Councilor Skiles?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Let me ask you something, Ms. De Leon, because I've seen you. Aren't you overrun in my area?
Uh, no, my home station is, uh, Station Six, right here downtown, on Third Avenue North, with a new expansion. I'm in now in public education, community relations, so this is what we'll do now to educate, you know, uh, students, residents, citizens in regards to fire safety.
Well, let me just say this, I'm glad, I'm so happy, come on up, chief. Uh, not a directive, friendly ask. I am so excited, uh, that the mayor recognized the effort that you did. It's such a representation of what the fire depart- department does all of the time. And I just wanna say that, a lot of times, people think that you say everything from this day is for political reasons. But I can tell you this, my grandmother owned boarding homes. And firefighters, first responders, make the difference between life and death. So I do have a high regard for the fire department, I have a high regard for everyone that works for the city, but let me just be transparent to say that you all made a difference, even with what was her livelihood that became her life. And I just wanna tell you, as a woman, uh, how proud I am of you. I think we have to encourage one another, we really do. It's not to sound sexist, but that's just real. That you see things, the difference between some people who see a problem and those who actually try to go rescue the problem is a leader versus a follower. And so I thank you for taking that leadership role and just doing what comes natural to you, and chief, you should be proud. Is this her husband?
No, this Derek Murphy.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Are you with her?
Mayor, actually, I, I just came by, so, but I am so thankful I came by. Uh, thank you, uh, mayor of the council.
And state your name.
Derek Murphy, I, I serve as the president of the school board of the city of Hoover. Uh, the gentleman that, uh, was rescued, uh, was, uh, my pa- my board member's son. Um, he, uh, he's at, he was at UAB up until yesterday and was transported to, uh, a hospital in Augusta, uh, Georgia. And, uh, they started surgery on him, so he's, he's, he's preparing to do well. Ninety-five percent of his body was burned. Uh, but I tell you, I, I really appreciate, uh, so many great people that we have in Birmingham that get out there and see a fire burning and that car could have, it had explode and, uh, could have hurt, uh, her and other people around, but, uh, that's the last thing was on her mind when it came to helping another neighbor. So thank y'all so much, and I'm glad I was here to acknowledge you, and I, I wanna get your information so we can, uh, acknowledge you in the city of Hoover as well.
Well, I, I was just in on that note to say, I'm proud of you, keep up the good work. And, and I cannot say enough, chief knows we've been talking a lot lately. Uh, I think that's why a lot of council members are beginning to, to do what we can do in addition to what the general fund already does, to try to make life real easy or easier for you. So I just want you to know that from me to you, I know you fight back the tears and all that kinda stuff, but I just want you to know, I'm proud of you. And I want you to keep up the good work and spread the love to our other brothers and sisters and let them know, we appreciate what you do. Yes, it's your job, but you weren't even quote-unquote on the job, that's just in you. So thank you, and thank you, chief. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Council Tyson?
Women power! I'm, I'm just so proud of you. You know, women are the number one voters in the United States. We are the number one and the lead in the workforce. We are the number one contributors to churches. We are the number one, uh, head of household. I can keep on and on and on. More power to the women.
Thank you.
And I'll just say this in closing, um, Ms. De Leon. Uh, you know, I've known you for, I don't know, a long time, and, um, just watched your two beautiful daughters grow up, and, you know, the, what, what was just shared with us by Chief Gordon is not surprising to me, um, because that's who you are as a person, that's your character. Even if you weren't a trained firefighter, I believe you still would have done the same thing. Um, so it's more than just about the job that you have, it's about your, um, your passion for people and really for helping people. So I just want to personally thank you, um, for the work that you're doing in the city and, and everything that you do. Uh, it, it really is important, uh, it means a lot to me, uh, to see you continuing to, to represent the city the, as well and, and the way that you are representing the city. So, um, you know, you're a friend of, of mine, a friend of my family, uh, so I just am so happy to be sitting here having the opportunity to honor you for the work that you're doing. So thank you so much for everything that you've done and what you will continue to do.
Thank you, thank you.
I wanna just add that, um, when Teresa first indicated that she wanted to become a Birmingham firefighter, rescue service personnel, I was surprised. But when she came on board, she showed such outstanding leadership qualities, such outstanding commitment to being a firefighter, and it's not an easy job. Uh, they don't relax the rules for females. Everybody has to be able to carry the same amount of weight to be able to roll those big hoses and carry out the responsibility. And she did it far beyond expectations, and she indicated then that she wanted to be an example for young women, to show what they can do. And I'm just proud to call her a friend, I'm proud to call her, um, an outstanding young lady who saved someone's life. And, but that's what you do each and every day. That's what all the men and women of our, our, um, public safety units do each and every day, save lives. And we thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. As you know, this week is the S I A C basketball tournament, which is being held out at, uh, Bill Harris Arena. Uh, Mr. Gregory Moore, the commissioner for the S I A C, is here to give us more information. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, Council President Austin, Council, uh, President Pro Tem, uh, Roberson, and members of the Birmingham Council. I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to present and just give you a sense of our basketball tournament and our conference. Uh, really, this event would not be possible in this city without the mayor's support and as well as the, the support of the city council, so we're, we're very appreciative of that. Uh, it's important to just, I just wanna take a moment just to give you some context and give you a sense of, uh, the, the context in which this tournament is unfolding. Uh, I've been commissioner seven years. Um, I like to joke, I'm a recovering lawyer. But, uh, in the seven years that I've been, uh, commissioner, you know, we, when I got here in January of oh nine, we had a, a league that was in distress. We've been around for a hundred years, but our conference is really in, in trouble. Uh, we had about revenues of about five hundred thousand dollars. We had liabilities on our balance sheet of approaching four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there was no money in the bank and a reserve fund, two schools on, on probation. We had suffered three consecutive hundred thousand dollar deficits, a two hundred and thirty-seven thousand deficit the year before I arrived. Uh, our annual dues for our member schools are twenty-six thousand dollars. Uh, but, um, in the year before I arrived, on top of the twenty-six thousand dollars in dues, our schools had to pay a special assessment of forty-eight thousand one eighty-two just to keep the lights on. I can go on and on. Morale was down, our staff morale was down, league morale was down, so there was a lot of, of problems. And that was all unfolding in two thousand nine, as you know, within the context of, uh, an economic environment that was, you know, one of the worst that we've seen in, in a generation. Uh, fast forward to today, you know, our revenues have gone from five hundred thousand to one point two million. We're the only conference in the country in Division Two out of twenty-four conferences that have doubled revenues. We've moved from eighteenth out of twenty-four conferences to number two in the country in revenues. We've gone from last to first by every, almost every measurable social media metric, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube. We have more YouTube views, views and subscribers than the MEAC, SWAC, and C I double A combined. Our reserve fund's gone from negative four hundred thousand dollars to plus five hundred thousand dollars projected by the end of this year. And we've done all this by, you know, working elbow to elbow with, with our council chairman, President, uh, George T. French, who's the president of Miles College, who's been an enormous, enormous resource. In addition to just our financial metrics, in the past, uh, seven years, we were the first conference, we talk about, I heard one of the councilmembers talk about women power. Uh, one of our conferences led the way in terms of inclusion and gender inclusion in particular. Uh, we're the first college conference, Division One, Two, or Three, black, white, or polka dot that allow women to officiate football games that occur in this city on the campus of Miles College. We also are, I believe, the only conference in the country that has all female, uh, assist, assist, associate commissioners in my staff. So this change has also been driven by female administrators who often, in the sports context, are not given real opportunities. And we also became the first, uh, NCA conference, Division One, Two, or Three, to strike a deal with the NFL to striking, uh, promoting inclusion amongst, uh, their NFL officiating. Uh, why is that all important? It's important because, uh, the basketball tournament is a key driver for all of that. Uh, one of the first things I did when I became commissioner, I talked to all of our presidents and, uh, and just got their sense of what the challenges were. And I quickly realized that they all saw the league conference office as not advancing the interests of the member schools. So if you put yourself in the shoes of President French, although he has a lot of things he's worried about, his probably top five things are enrollment and retention, uh, community engagement, alumni engagement, uh, the marketing and visibility of his institution, uh, obviously identifying revenue opportunities and maximizing student ath- athlete experience. The S I C basketball tournament is one of the few initiatives that we have that moves the needle on all of those things. Uh, in terms of enrollment, we had our college fair last year in this city that attracted about two thousand kids. Uh, about a thousand kids applied, roughly seven hundred kids in, uh, uh, were accepted, and approximately a hundred kids were enrolled, which had about a million dollar economic impact at the member school level. Now, those are some of the things that, that we got out of it. What did the city get out of it? Well, uh, we, our schools, thirteen schools last year combined, spent, uh, about, about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just on food and hotels alone. That's a three hundred percent return on the investment of this council. That's a qualit- that's a quantitative return of investment. But qualitatively, I would just say that, you know, in two thousand sixteen, you know, many of our schools are at an inflection point. Uh, they exist in a political environment where things are getting tougher, not easier. So the support that this conference, that this body and this mayor and this council gives this tournament as a driver for all of our schools is critically important, and we're very appreciative. And you're really making in a very real sense investments in our kids. We have thirty-five thousand kids in our league, two thousand student athletes. So this, your support is not only, uh, appreciative, but it, it makes a great difference. So I just want to thank you for, again, for the chance to just give you a recap. We're happy to be here once again. All the local schools, Mr. Mayor, doing well. The Miles Women let, won last night, uh, the Tuskegee Men won last night, Stillman's won. So I, I think we're expecting, you know, a, a robust event this year, because again, all the local universities and colleges are doing quite well. I will say one last accomplishment, uh, Miles College won its second S I C football championship this year, and Tuskegee advanced to the Elite Eight in the N C A P playoffs, which is as far as any one of our schools have advanced in the hundred-year history of our league. So I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, the state of the S I C is good. The Tuskegee University. So thank you.
You know, we beat y'all down there, don't you?
Thank you, thank you.
No, we, we thank you for that presentation and to bring the facts forward as, as to the, um, dollars and cents that you all generate here in this city.
Mayor, you have, uh, a couple of speakers, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for bringing Commissioner Moore, uh, to the meeting today. Um, HBCUs are significant to educating, um, young people throughout this country. And, um, as Commissioner Moore mentioned in his, uh, comments, you know, revenue generated opportunities like this are huge to help support, um, the membership of the S I A C. This event is here in our city. Uh, I'm glad that the mayor and, and the S I C and Commissioner Moore were able to come together to, and the council to support you in these efforts to have, uh, a great event like the basketball tournament here. Uh, but I think what a lot of people don't realize in recruiting at these institutions, athletics plays a huge role. Uh, athletics are the external capacities to these institutions that actually assist in generating a lot of revenue and support, uh, for those schools. And in particular, HBCUs, uh, in addition to athletics, it's the bands that perform at these athletic events that really attract, uh, young people to attend these great institutions. So as Commissioner Moore mentioned, the financial turnarounds that have taken place at the S I A C has been tremendous, and I commend you and your staff on your leadership and your council presidents. But what we're doing here in Birmingham is also a huge asset to supporting these schools so they can support, uh, their student athletes, uh, and the curriculums and academia that they are involved in. So, uh, I'm glad that you're here, Commissioner Moore. Uh, we got a lot of basketball. I think we're balling in Birmingham right now. We got basketball, uh, with the S I A C tournament, of course, the high school tournament going on, but, uh, it's a great brand of sports. I just appreciate you being here, and I'm just making the plea publicly, uh, for everyone to go out and support. Uh, this HBCU conference has come a long ways, uh, amongst the four, uh, to become a leader amongst historically black colleges and universities uh, in athletics, and thank you for being here today. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. That's it. Okay. Uh, again, thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Um, UAB, UAB football is back, and the Blazers are keeping the tradition going with the Third Annual Sons of UAB Spring Game. The game will take place on March fifth, two thousand and sixteen, at noon at UAB Soccer Field. I have with us this morning, Mr. Tim Alexander and Mr. Ralph Harbison, uh, to give us some more information. Tim and Ralph?
Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council, thank you for the honor of bringing us in to speak to you for a minute. Um, as a UAB alumni, let me thank you also for your support. We talk about the impact that UAB has on Birmingham and the area. We do not talk enough about the impact that Birmingham has had on UAB. The truth is, this is the magic city because of what happened in the past, how this city grew so fast. We need to stop thinking about it that way and think about it now as this is a magic city because of how much we've changed. This city should have been dead fifty years ago, but it's not. And there's a life and an energy in this city today that has not been seen in my lifetime, and I'm forty-three years old. And that life is reflected at UAB and contributed to by UAB. And we wanna thank the city of Birmingham for all of your support, uh, both monetarily and prayers as well as everything else that this city has done for UAB. The event this Saturday, and I'm gonna let Tim speak more about it, he is, um, our coach, face of the program, heart and soul. Uh, at, at ten o'clock, we're gonna have an open practice. It is the only open practice that Coach Clark allows. He would have been here, but he's practicing right now, and he does not take time off for anybody or anything. So, uh, do come out at ten, see the football team practice, then stay at noon. We've got some of the old timers coming back. We have over sixty confirmed players. Last year's event was a riot. Um, Tim scored a touchdown. Tim also got knocked over, cause they don't show no mercy. So do come out, and then after that event, there is a soccer game on the field, so it's a football, football event at UAB this Saturday. So, Tim?
Well, again, Mayor, to the host, City Council, thank you all so much.
Well, again, Mayor, to the host, City Council, thank you all so much for just standing behind U A B and just showing your generosity to everyone at U A B. And as he said this morning, Coach Clark, we had a seven thirty A M, well, seven fifteen staff meeting this morning. The coach was talking about practice and I said, Coach, we gotta go to City Hall, but I'm going on your behalf. So everything was good. But like he said, it's our third tradition and we talked about the, the impact that U A B has on the community and the city. And we just didn't want to bring a spring football game because it's more than just football. It's about education and just the furtherment after football. So what we did this year, we put together a career fair for the football team. There's gonna be all the guys this Friday from five to six thirty in our green and gold room that we would love for you all to come out to our career fair and just talk with the guys and just let them know that, hey, there is a life after football. And as he said, on this Saturday, we're gonna have our spring game. So we just want to thank, you know, everyone for coming out and just showing your support to U A B. As you all have saw, we have the number one recruiting class in Conference USA. And it's not far from here. It's right down the road. And it's good to know that, as they say, you know, U A B is for Birmingham and Birmingham is for U A B. And we talk about the city, we talk about the mayor, and, and the guys really do look forward to seeing, you know, you all. So just please come on out when you can and just come and see us because at the end of the day, we are for Birmingham and we know that Birmingham is for U A B and we look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you all so much. Go Blazers.
Thank you, Mayor. You led in with Go Blazers. Tim and Richard, I mean, excuse me, Richard and U A B Ambassador, Tim, good to see you here again. And you're right, what U A B is doing for this community is tremendous. We had the opportunity to attend the basketball game this past week. And Jared Haas, Coach Haas, is doing an outstanding job as it relates to that U A B basketball team. They are number one right now in Conference USA, number one going into the Conference USA tournament. I saw a prediction today on the N C double A, actually, tournament brackets that they could be a fifteen seed against Xavier, a number two seed. I think we can beat Xavier. I've watched them play and that basketball team is tremendous. So come out again. I think the tournament's next week if I'm not mistaken.
March ten.
Yeah, March ten. And again, another, we balling in Birmingham. We just gotta keep it going and looking forward to the events this weekend. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all.
Mayor, bear with me. Come on back up here, Tim. You too, sir. I'm excited. I only have one question, Tim, and I hope that I haven't missed this wonderful occasion of yours. Are you married yet? You do have a fiance, right?
Not yet.
Not yet. Well, the reason why I say that because I saw something on Facebook, but I feel like I'm your big sister. So when, when, when you go all across, jump the broom, I wanna be there. I'm gonna be crying and everything. You know, you have a tendency to have that effect on me. I am glad to see that U A B is, is back where, where we needed for it to be. And I think because of the fact that sometimes you really don't appreciate things until it's taken away. That's unfortunate, but I, I think that U A B is in a good place. And, and you couldn't ask for a better spokesperson and support. I mean, you all have really come together and I'm telling you, you got all of us on board. So whatever U A B does, I think that you'll have the full support of the city. Yeah. Thank you, Tim. Don't forget that now. I'm holding you to it. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, guys. As, as the President Pro Tim indicated, Birmingham is balling. We've got the Alabama High School Athletic Association Basketball Tournament here in Birmingham this weekend. We got S I A C. Then we have Conference USA coming in here. This week, we have four schools that are, are four teams from Birmingham that are in the tournament over at this B J C C. And if you want to count Homewood, well, we got some more teams as well. And I know that's special to some of our council members in there, right, Mr. Pro Tim? We've got on our Wednesday, March the second, Huffman High School Girls will play Homewood High School Girls. So I know there's gonna be some, some little rivalry here on the council podium about that game. And then we've got Huffman Boys versus Homewood Boys at six A M. Then we know the High School Girls versus Troy's Charles Henderson's Girl, Girls at three P M. And that's a five A clash. Then we got the Ramsey High Boys versus Mobile's Faith Academy Boys at four thirty P M, which is also a five A game. And so we look forward to our local teams and we wish them all much luck and success and to continue to represent Birmingham in this metropolitan area well. Finally, I just want to say today is election day. We want to encourage everyone to go out and vote for the candidate of your choice. It is a right of every citizen. In fact, it's an obligation of every citizen to participate in our democratic process. So I want to encourage everyone to go out and, and vote today. That's all I have at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have anything for the mayor? All right, um, next thing is a-
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Let, let me-
Mr. Gibbs?
I, I, I've got one thing working on my list. And now I'm running out of this, outside the hall. Now, come on up here. We talked about the walkers. Um, Betty Boo, I want to recognize, good morning to the council, good morning to the council president, good morning to everyone. I don't want she little, she, I'm looking over women. I ain't gonna do that. I'm not gonna do that.
Good morning, good morning. Good morning to the mayor, president and the council. My name is Betty Taylor and I'm one of the walkers at East Lake High, early morning walkers. And I'm here to encourage you all to please come out and walk with us, walk with the mayor on Friday morning at six A M. And not just Friday, any day. Come and walk. It's good for your health and everything. High blood pressure, diabetes, everything is good for you. It'll keep you looking good and it'll keep your walking good. So just please come out now. Y'all promised us before when Malcolm was here that you all was gonna come out, but then nobody come out from the council. Yes, you did. I remember seeing you, but nobody else. But believe me, it would help you all if you will walk, not just for me, not just for the mayor, for your own purpose. So please come out and walk, everybody. Everybody come out and walk, 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 walk. It's good for you. You look better and you look good. So I love you. Ain't nothing you can do about it. See you Friday with the mayor.
Council Hoit. Yes, uh, Ms. Taylor, I wanna-
Thank you all so much and all you guys have done a great job and I just love you. Just keep on doing what you're doing and I'm out of here.
Wait a minute. Just hold up, hold up a minute. I'm not gonna let you leave. Now, I, I was there the morning you, that you all didn't show up. So you need to know that. Come on back in.
What is he talking about?
I didn't see you.
Y'all wasn't there.
Was it raining?
No, it was cold. It was real cold.
Well, it was raining also, but it was a lot of them out there, but I didn't see you, 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 you.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. We, we gonna come. But Malcolm, I'm just trying to see, uh, when we gonna see some results.
Hey, let me tell you, let me tell you, uh, we gonna cut this short. You know, you-
Why you trying to grow a beard like me?
Now, I thought you was copying off of me.
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, this right here, Betty Boo said, look good. Well, anyway, we enjoyed you all so much and if you get a chance to come out to the park, we'll be glad to have you out. As a matter of fact, we'll go to your neighborhood. Wherever you live, we'll walk in your neighborhood. We'll be over there. Just tell us when and we'll come. Is that right, Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Yeah, the mayor's been walking a long time.
You've been walking a long time with us. So y'all please come out now. I'm gonna be looking for you.
Don't go nowhere, Mayor.
And you too, Mr. Pat. I be looking for you all.
Hey, too. I'm not coming. I'm walking in my distance.
Council Scale?
Hey, no, I just wanted to say this right quick. While Ms. Betty Boo is getting all of us told off, and Malcolm, come on up here. You know I'm not gonna let you off the hook like that. Now, Ms. Betty, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna say this as part of my report. Betty Boo put me on the spot when I was on W A T V and she said, what y'all gonna do about that Booker T. Washington Insurance Company on Greatmont Avenue? Is that what you saying?
Protective life.
Protective life, excuse me.
I want the president, please, sir, if you don't mind, please check in on Greatmont and Fifth Street and Third Street with them green apartments and them green houses need to be come down. I've been fighting for that a long time. So I'm looking for you to do something about it.
Hey, but Ms. Betty, Ms. Betty, I'm talking to you though. You didn't pull out your extension cord on everybody.
Thank you.
Now, hey, but now, Ms. Betty, the reason why I say that, because you know, I told you on the radio, I said, I promise I'm gonna tell the mayor. So I'm saying it in front of the mayor so that you can know that I said it, right? Okay, so now Malcolm Gay, I want you to know, I thank you for all of your kind words. You encourage all the council members that come on W A T V and you're such a joy. And Ms. Betty, I feel the same way about you, that I love you and ain't nothing you can do about it, not even the words you say. Alrighty.
Everyone, it's nothing like a sexy send yourself some help.
That's all, Mr. President.
All right, um, Council Lund, do you have one thing for the mayor?
Yeah, Mayor Bell, an email was sent to, uh, your office to, I think, Mr. Bidis, uh, in regards to the three hundred block of West Smithfield Drive in Dolomite. Pass that to the mayor if you would. In the three hundred block of West Smithfield Drive in Dolomite, the, the, the design of the road and the speed that drivers are taking on that road has become hazardous to life and hazardous to the residents in the three hundred block of West Smithfield Drive. Here you have an S U V that has flipped over. And this is just one of the pictures that you're looking at where you see the baby stroller and carriage that has come out of the flipped over car. Here is the lady and the baby that was in the car. They survived, but this is just indicative of the many accidents that we've seen in the last several months just on this one road. This road has been brought to the attention of the city per Miss Kaye on numerous occasions. And we just can't have another accident where we might lose a child and a mother to this speed and this endangerment. So I'm just coming before the mayor and the office of the mayor to see if we can't get some resolve to this.
Council Scale? Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm waiting on the announce. Oh, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Councilor, we're looking at the street and, you know, there's a lot of speeding going on and it's kind of curves where that house is. So we asked the police department to put some patrol out there to monitor speeding. And also Greg Dawkins went out there and actually put up some signage for kind of to slow down the speeds. And I'm also looking at some kind of, possibly looking at some coating to apply on that surface if we can increase the friction of the road. So we're looking at that, but really primarily is gonna be the speeding and the curve of the road. So the police department is gonna be out there more frequently to monitor speeders and give them tickets. But we're also gonna try to apply some, some coating on that pavement to see if we can increase the friction on that.
Mr. Bidis, what is the road over by Avondale Park that we reskated to force traffic to do the kind of zigzag?
Oh, this is the, the thirty-ninth, I think, was, we did the, we did the chicanes to kind of-
That's it.
Calm traffic down, yes, sir.
Yeah.
I need to look at the roadway over there because it's a little narrow and you start bumping out the curb. You may create more additional hazard. So we'll look at that too, but we're gonna try to apply that friction layer surface on the pavement, see if that would, you know, work. So we'll look at the chicanes, but I, I don't think that the road wide enough for us to bump out the curb without creating a hazard to the vehicles, you know, get over the curb. So, but I'll, I'll take a look at that. That's no problem.
Yeah. Have you, have you seen these pictures, Mr. Bidis?
Yes, I saw them yesterday. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. President. I wanted to report two areas as well that has large potholes. Noel Grissette and the Huffman community, matter of fact, sent me a video. There are large potholes that are on Jeffrey Circle. And so I wanted to, to report that, Mr. Mayor. And also in the twelve hundred block of Huffman Road, this is the road that if you go off Parkway East and you, you, like you're going toward Smith Middle School, anyway, there's a large pothole in the twelve hundred block of Huffman Road. If you can assist us with that, I'd certainly appreciate it. But those are two very, very large potholes that have been reported and I wanted to make sure we shared that this morning. So whatever we can do to get that done very quickly, we certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Tyson?
I have a pothole right in front of Steiner and Twelfth Street. Coming out of Steiner, right there at Twelfth Street. Got four potholes there. And on Tuck Luther Avenue, between Fourteenth Street and Fifteenth Street, is two houses burned at least eighty percent. And I, I have recorded them, Mr. Bidis, we have came out and actually looked at one of them. Since then, the other end of the house caught on fire and it's burned at least eighty percent. And it's getting hot and children running in and out of those houses. And I'm so afraid that the, uh, the, uh, beans and stuff will, will, uh, get weak out, you know, from the rain and it will fall on them. They ran out of there yesterday. Thank you, Mayor.
Council Hoit?
Yes, um, and Counselors Tyson, I thought you was gonna mention about Martin Luther King Street going on that powder. It is awful. I thought I was gonna tap my car.
Right there by Loveville Village.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I noticed that as well.
Man, I mean-
It's the bad arc, right as you get to Loveville Village and Elwood Cemetery.
Yes.
I've been emailing that to Mr. Bidis for the last year.
Counselor, this, this project is actually on the ALDOT list for resurfacing, so we included that in the, in the grant. So we have a project there to do.
It's supposed to go all the way up to Third Avenue, though.
It does, it does.
Okay, that's gonna be with that reconstruction of our, of, of, of the, what's that funeral home and that whole street skate?
Wait, well, we included this M L K route under a grant we received from ALDOT for resurfacing. And that's gonna go, but they're gonna go under the water.
That's good.
Okay, that is great. Thank you.
All right. Let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers. Hold on, real quick, Council Scale?
Yes, sir. I did have one more ask of Mr. Bidis, please. I know that with those fire stations that we've gotten the estimates, but I, I noticed that for Fire Station Twenty-eight, that there was not a flooring estimate. If that could be provided, that would be very helpful.
On Twenty-eight, yes, ma'am. You know, I get the list of the, the needs from the fire chief.
Yes, sir.
And I applied the cost estimates to what he asked us to, to repair.
Yes, sir.
I'll go back to him and see if we can include the, the flooring estimate. That's not a problem.
Don't mind, uh, Mr. Bidis. Excuse me, uh, just asking if we can get that this week because we have worked out everything else and Chaz is, for the most part, I think, is taking care of everything. But we wanted to just get an estimate on the floor for Fire Station Twenty-eight.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Council Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask you, last year and the year before and the year before that, I think the year before that, you asked us for our top three capital projects for the bond fund, funds, and you haven't asked us yet. So I was wondering when you're going to ask and when you're going to give us our street paving list and tell us to, you know, select our streets. Maybe I missed something here. I heard somebody say we've already got the list and I'm supposed to be picking now. But I've got my three- projects selected. Actually, I've got four. But I just wanted to know when you're gonna ask. I'm waiting for the ask.
Could the council please give me their top three items?
Yes.
I'm asking now.
Yes, because, you know, y'all need to do cost estimates for us and all that good stuff. So you're ready to accept them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I wanted. Thank you.
All right, we, uh, let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers. So move? So move?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
First speaker?
Anita Bolden.
Bolden?
Morning.
State your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Anita Bolden, I live at Thir- thirty-one twenty-one Avenue I in Enslin, and I have been here before, but everybody was present, and everybody agreed to something should be done. I have, I have, uh, engineers have came to my home, I have spoke to Mr. Andrew Bittes, Bittes, I have talked to Mr. Jarvis Patton, I have talked to Mr. John Salon. They have, someone have came out to my home and agreed that something should be done, because my backyard is flooded and come from heights and things have been laid by the city. But instead, nothing have been done. And last time I spoke and came here, it's, uh, it was in October, but I still haven't heard anything back. My floors is coming apart, and my foundation is bugging. And I had a cement block to go up under the ground, but nothing have happened. And I had gotten a letter, and when I started on, kept coming back, when I first got the letter from the city, it was July the ninth of two thousand and fourteen. Nothing have been done. And I feel that if I come to City Hall and do something to City Hall, I have to hold accountable for it. And I feel that City Hall should be held accountable for my property. I'm not asking for a million dollars for my property, I'm asking to be relocated to somewhere safe for being in my health. Uh, fix the problem. That's all I'm asking, I'm asking to be treated fairly.
Ms. President, I, I'm still waiting on a recommendation as to what the solution to the problem is. It's my understanding that it's not just Ms. Bolden's house, but it's all the houses in that area, and whatever we do for one, we're gonna have to do for all. What I think we may have to do is just look at what the cost is to come to some resolution for that entire area. I don't think there's a singular solution, at least that's what I'm being told by, um, the various departments. John or Andre, is there anything else you wanna add?
No, sir, we're, that's accurate. We did look at the area, and our cost estimate, uh, to repair that drainage in that area is about low over two hundred thousand dollars. We didn't include that project on the bond list, it's on the list, uh, to be funded if the projects are approved. But also, there was conversation with Ms. Bolden at different times that, you know, could be probably more prudent or more cost effective to relocate Ms. Bolden some other place.
How would that, how would that affect the other?
Uh, well, we have to look, we have to run the street, you know, to, to connect the sewer, the storm sewer, because you have to go about a block to connect the storm sewer. The other folks have not really given us any complaints, you know, tell us about the drainage problems, you know, her property is right on the corner and it's lower than the street, so it's creating additional water coming down because she's lower than the street itself.
I, I tell you what, if you and, um, John Cologne give me a recommendation, what would satisfy Ms. Bolden, whether it's fixing it or relocating her, then we'll, we'll act on it, and, uh, oftentimes, when I, when I see problems, we have to identify where the funding is gonna come from, and Mr. Bittes is indicating that he's going to recommend that it comes out of the bond funding, and so we'll, we'll move then, but it's not, it's, it won't happen until we get approval on how we're gonna spend the bond money. But, uh, that, that's the solution that we'll come forward. Well, I'll wait for the solution that they tell me makes sense for the city.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next speaker, Rosie Willis? State your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Rosie Willis, my address is, uh, Freedom Manor, sixteen seventeen Fifth Avenue North, Men apartment two seventeen. Okay, my concern is that, uh, we have a bad epidemic of, uh, bedbugs in Freedom Manor. And, uh, I mean, y'all come up and asked us to vote for you, we go and vote, but then we're not getting any help. It's people there that's sick, have cancer and other illness, but, um, I'm just saying, and, and they're dying regularly, but, uh, who's to say that the, uh, bedbugs, I think, is contributing to it? And, uh, people are throwing out their bedding and furniture, not able to buy anymore, not able to have a good night's sleep because they're scratching and, uh, beat up. But, um, we, I've, I've, uh, I mean, I'm not just speaking for myself, but I'm speaking for other people also. It's real bad, and we need some help. Something need to be done.
Go ahead.
Well, and, and I, I wanna say, uh, Ms. Willis, uh, matter of fact, I'm texting the executive assistant to the, um, the CEO of, um, of the Housing Authority, and so that we can, uh, come down there. I've been the manager at that property before, and it's always been a problem. Part of the problem is the fact that some folk bring in old furniture that have bug, bedbugs in it, and when you got a common area, you, and when you live, uh, you know, that closely to folk, and you have a common area, as we do, uh, in the, uh, you know, the activity room, people bring it, and then you sit in that same seat, and it's just, it's a hard, and it's quite, it, it's quite common, uh, when you got, um, that, living two oh two housing, because HUD has all, has sent out a mandate as to how we deal with the bedbug, and you have to wrap the furniture, throw it in the trash, that's, I mean, that's unfortunate, but that's, you know, that's part of the, uh, how you mitigate, uh, the bedbugs. But I, I do know, uh, even when I was there as a manager, that we had some, uh, some issues with the bedbugs, but I'm gonna, um, make sure that the executive director knows about this, and so we can, uh, try to get some resolve. We do, they do spray on a monthly basis, I do know that, for the bed, bedbugs, and when we have it at, um, at an increased level, we go into that unit, but we have to wrap that furniture. But then, if you're dealing with, you know, people of a load of moderate income, they go back out and buy used furniture, and guess what? Bedbugs is on the furniture, bring it in there, you leave your apartment, go to the common area, and then they get on the chairs, on the couches, and you take it back to you, and, and so, by the time we get wind of it, it's out of hand, and so we'll, we'll, we'll address it. I got your, uh, address and your number here, and so somebody should be calling you today.
Today?
Today.
Okay, well, they said that months ago. I've just only been there eight months.
But this first time I've heard it from you.
Yeah.
And so I'm saying, as one who, uh, sits on this council, and one who works for the Housing Authority, that you will hear from us today.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker?
Sherman Sterling.
Mr. Sterling?
Good morning, everyone. Councilman? Councilman?
Good morning.
Councilman?
State your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Sherman Lee Sterling. I'm located at seventeen eighteen Teakwood Lane. I am a resident of Councilman Skales resident, and I'm here this morning appealing on behalf of Reggae in the Park. This is a series of free concerts that was requested by North Birmingham neighborhood presidents, Bearmount Park Community Neighborhood Association, Harriman Park Neighborhood Association, uh, this is North Birmingham Neighborhood Association, and the Matt Arlington Park Cottageville Neighborhood Association. I've got boots on the ground out there, went personally, one-on-one to these neighborhood meetings and attended them, and I was honored to be supported by those following neighborhood presidents to have Reggae in the Park approved. I requested the support and funding, and I was approved and asked to come before the council. I've also went before the mayor, sent him a request, and he asked that I also come before the council, asking for, uh, overall support of ongoing Reggae in the Park, a series of concerts that we will not only stop in North Birmingham with Mr. Parkers District, Fourth District, but we will go with every other neighborhood council in the city of Birmingham as we approach them with a request. We are asking for the overall support that this event be funded and resources supplied to us. It is an ongoing event that has two days of celebration for those five neighborhoods in that North Birmingham district who has come together and supported it and felt that it was something they wanted for their neighborhood. Mrs., uh, Tyson, Mrs., uh, Abbott, all of the council members, I'm coming before you, asking for that, uh, support. And I would like to be able to go to my councilman, Ms. Lunder, uh, Skales, Shonda Skales, with the next Reggae in the Park coming for July. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, Pastor Bobby McGuire?
Praise God, good morning, council.
State your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Bobby, Pastor Bobby McGuire, four thirteen Last Lane, Birmingham, Alabama. I was at the meeting last night. It was awesome. Y'all were looking for some solutions, but you never did get to it, and I'm here today, praise God, 'cause it's something I wanna do in the city, and it calls what we get together at my church, shut the city down for Jesus, just for one day. The young man, uh, quoted the scripture last night, he had a solution, but he really didn't wanna bring it out, that God is not to offer confusion. Amen, so I believe that if we give God a chance, and I'm here today to ask the councilman, let's give the churches a chance to help with the solutions. I believe if the churches can really come together, praise God, I believe God can stand strong in this city. And not only that, we need our magic back in the city, and we billing around the city, but no one trying to, um, stop the crime. I'm not the smartest cookie in, in, in the cookie jar, but I understand the crime, and I understand God. If we, we, we done had, the last ten years, we done had a new mayor, we done had a new, uh, chief of police. We have police in every city school in Birmingham, and we looking forward to going in the kindergarten after a while if we don't get ahead of this thing. But let's try God, let get God in the community. I would like to block some streets, I'm, I'm very strong in blocking streets, we in, we known it now. The lady came out back in August, and she began to tell her, she said, since you've been walking the street and praying in our streets, we haven't had any killing in three years. We was in Cottageville two thousand and three, and I ran a three-night revival in the, in the park, we was out there two in the morning, having a great time in the morning. So, there was no killing in Cottageville for five years, why? Because we allowed the anointing of God to begin to walk those community. I do believe in God, and I believe in not just going to church on Sunday, letting, letting the preacher preach a good sermon, shouting, and we still can't tell the peoples what he preached about. But it, it's a serious thing in the city. We billing around the city, and we afraid to go to Walmart after eleven o'clock. It shouldn't be like that. Come on, give the churches a chance. Give us a chance. I'm willing myself to walk the streets, I, I'm, I'm not afraid of the enemy, because I know who the enemy is, and I know who my God is. Come on, let's, let's give God a chance to do a work in the city. We want our magic back. We wanna be gay, in, able to get out in Cottageville, praise God, and walk the streets the way I, I, I raised in Cottageville. And we used to walk at kids from, from Ellene City, across from Callaway, to Wayfair Hustle School, seven and eight years old. We, we weren't, uh, afraid of anything back then, but now we afraid to even leave out our front yard to take trash to the end of the road. Give God a chance. That's the solution. Pray. We want our magic back in the city of Birmingham. Amen?
Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you, next speaker?
Denise?
Dennis?
Willis. Willis? Dennis, I'm sorry.
Dennis Willis? My apologies, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Dennis Willis. My address is eleven fifty-three Sixteenth Street Southwest. My name is Dennis Willis. My address is eleven fifty-three Sixteenth Street Southwest. Good morning.
Morning.
This is a proposal to enable the city of Birmingham to increase the minimum wage for the citizens of Birmingham, regardless of the actions taken or to be taken by the legislature, by the state legislature or the governor. Our offer will enable thousands of citizens of the city of Birmingham to attain employment with wages at the rate of twenty dollars per hour, thereby contributing to the expansion of the city's tax base. Our company, Dennis Willis Music Publishing Company, which is licensed by the city of Birmingham, has a, a subscription music service which offers employment opportunities to our subscribers. Our subscribers have the opportunity to have their monthly subscription payments reported to at least one of the major credit bureaus in an effort to help them to either establish or reestablish their credit, and our subscribers have an opportunity to supplement their income by registering to work as a part of the cast and crew of our unscripted reality television show titled Magic City Flavor with Dennis Willis, which we use as a platform to showcase the talent of the new generation of American entertainers. Now, as we understand the situation, it is that in order for the city of Birmingham to increase the minimum wage for the citizens of Birmingham, there must be an employer or employers willing to pay the increased minimum wage. So our offer is to employ every single citizen of Birmingham, Alabama, who wants to work at an increased minimum wage of twenty dollars per hour per taping of our television show, which will be broadcast on the CBS Television Network. And we hereby pray that the city of Birmingham will serve as escrow agent with regard to the collection of the subscription and registration payments. We're planning a series of television specials which will take place at venues within the city of Birmingham, including the Bowel Auditorium and the B J C C Legacy Arena. Please contact me at two zero five two five three five seven four six regarding any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Council Skales? Yes. Council Skales? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Clerk, you wanna make your report real quick?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, council. Um, I'd like to make my, my report concerning the mayor's veto of ordinance number sixteen twenty-nine and sixteen thirty. Ordinance number sixteen twenty-nine, the veto message is as follows. Whereas section three point one five of the Mayor Council Act of nineteen fifty-five authorized the mayor to veto ordinances and resolutions passed by the council and states, if the mayor should disapprove of any ordinance or resolution transmitted to him, as aforementioned, he shall, within ten days of the time of its passage by the council, return the same to the clerk within his objections and writing, the clerk shall make report there to the next regular meeting of this city council, and whereas the city council passed ordinance number sixteen, that's twenty-nine, at its regularly scheduled council meeting on February the twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, and whereas ordinance number sixteen twenty-nine creates confusion by its restatement and interpretation of the council's authority as it currently exists under Alabama law, whereby creating the probability of misinterpretation and improper implementation of the policies stated in the ordinance, would almost certainly lead to violations of one or more provisions of the Mayor Council Act and other provisions of Alabama law. And whereas ordinance number sixteen, that's twenty-nine, is prejudicial to the public interest as it is unduly burdens the administrative function of city government, now therefore I, William A. Bell, Senior Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, do by here, hereby veto and disapprove ordinance number sixteen, that's twenty-nine, as indicated on the attached ordinance for the reasons stated above. This veto is filed with the city clerk on this date signed, and below the city clerk should report the same to the next regular meeting on the council dated this twenty-ninth day of February, two thousand and sixteen. And veto of ordinance number sixteen thirty, whereas section three point one five of the Mayor Council Act of nineteen fifty-five authorized the mayor to veto ordinances and resolutions passed by the council and states, if the mayor shall disapprove of an ordinance or resolution transmitted to him, as, as was said, he shall, within ten- or resolution transmitted to him, as aforementioned, he shall, within ten days of the time of its passage by the council, return to the same to the clerk with his objections in writing, and the clerk shall make report thereof to the next regular meeting of the city council. And whereas the city council passed ordinance number sixteen dash thirty at its regularly scheduled council meeting on February the twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, whereas the council failed to present the final version of ordinance number sixteen dash thirty to the law department for review as deformed in legality prior to the entertainment by the city council of the motion to adopt the ordinance as required by section two dash two dash fifteen, the general code of the city of Birmingham. And whereas the council failed to present upon introduction the final version of ordinance number sixteen dash thirty to the mayor for his administrative recommendation prior to entertainment by the city council of the motion to adopt the ordinance as required by section two dash two dash fifteen, the general city code of the city of Birmingham. And whereas ordinance number sixteen dash thirty creates unduly burdensome reporting requirements on the office of the mayor and the administrative staff that will interfere with the preparation of the budget. And whereas ordinance number sixteen dash thirty creates confusion by its restatement, interpretation of the council's authority as it currently exists under Alabama law, and improper implementation of the policies stated in the ordinance could violate provisions of the Mayor Council Act. Now therefore I, William A. Bell, Senior Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby veto and disapprove ordinance number sixteen dash thirty. As indicated on the attached ordinance for the reasons stated above, this veto is filed with the city clerk on the date signed below, and the city clerk should report the same to the next regular meeting of the council dated this twenty-ninth day of February two thousand and sixteen.
All right. All the new business, Councilor Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, I want to thank the citizens of District One for affording me the opportunity to be their voice as well as the city of Birmingham. I'd like to call for, uh, a resolution of sympathy for Ms. Jackeline, J.A.C.Q.U.E.L.I.N.E., Governor, G.I.V.N.E.R., I so move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
That passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I want to say congratulations to my Huffman High School girls and boys, uh, basketball team. Mama Scales is gonna be at the BJCC cheering on my girls and my boys. I'm really, really excited for them. Uh, happened to be with the principal, uh, as a matter of fact, when he got the call uh, to say that the boys had won, he was at work and so they text him and so I'm very, very excited that we not only have the boys, but we have the girls. And, uh, and they're gonna be playing at BJCC, the mayor's already indicated that, uh, early, and I'm very, very excited. For those of you all attend, uh, tuning in, uh, by way of streaming, uh, then if you don't know where to go vote at this time, don't take it for granted, gotta have your state ID, but call three two five 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 zero, that's three two five 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 zero. You know, voting is absolutely a right, not a privilege. And we have got to make sure, you cannot complain if you don't participate in the process. So I'm asking everyone, under the sound of my voice, go out in droves, take a friend. Again, you don't have to be dismayed in terms of finding out if you're voting Republican, go on and ask for a Republican ballot so you can get that. If you're having Democrat or Independent, go ahead and ask for that ballot when you walk in the door. So you already know what you're doing. But most importantly, if you don't know where to go vote, that's the number that you need to contact. This is Super Tuesday and, uh, we do have several folk. I don't know, Mr. President, if we can even say it from the dais, but I want to congratulate them in advance on, uh, being delegates, uh, for presidential candidates. And I do have one, and all I can say is, women rock. And Beyonce made a song, said, Who Runs the World? And I look forward to the free world being run by just that tune, Who Runs the World? Girls. So I look forward to it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Parker?
Good morning. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just one announcement that the park board will be meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock at Legion Field, so that's the only announcement. And also, as relates to the, uh, projects for parks, we will continue to be working with each council member. Um, we were out in Rickwood Field this past week and will be, uh, with Mr. Lundy last Thursday, uh, at Hooper City, and so we'll be working. Ms. Tyson, I know we have an issue with one of the parks that we need to confirm, so we'll just be working with each individually to, uh, shore up that list so we can report back, uh, hopefully within the next week or so, Mr. President.
All right. Uh, Councilor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, next meeting of the Education Committee will be on Tuesday, March twenty-second at two PM in Conference Rooms D and E. On last week, the MPO held its Public Involvement Meeting at the RPC. That was the night of the really bad weather and I hope they had a good turnout. I was, uh, I went home because I thought it was gonna blow me away. It didn't. But, uh, I did listen to the weather. Um, I went to South Health and Rehabilitation for the serving of the lunch, and that was certainly a lot of fun. I didn't get to cook anything, but I did get to serve and it was good to see all the residents and see how cheerful they were and what effort goes into the making of the food. My heavens, I'd never been involved in that before. And they really eat good food. Their lunch was like a dinner. I was impressed, I was ready to come back myself. And, um, that's where my father and my grandmother were and, and I just didn't realize what went into preparing the custom food for each person in the rehabilitation home. So, um, then I went to the Alzheimer's Association's new offices, they had their grand opening, and, um, their offices are very nice and I'm so glad we have an Alzheimer's office here in Birmingham now. I guess we didn't have one before because I met the new director and everybody was new and they were looking for interns to work there. But, um, certainly with recent developments in our office, um, it's good to know some people are working on, on Alzheimer's. A Taste of Avondale was held on Friday night and it was fabulous. The food was fabulous. They had so many more people show up than they were expecting that they finally ran out of food and drink. But that's a good problem to have if you're having a fundraiser. And I did learn when I got there that the funds were being raised to match the ten thousand dollars that the Merchants Association has pledged for the planning of the new streetscape in Avondale. So here is a good example of merchants who are putting their money where their mouths are instead of always asking the government to do everything. And now they're having fundraisers to match the money that the merchants have pledged. So I, uh, I was very impressed. It was a lot of fun and there, of course, I might have been one of the oldest people there. There were tons of young people who were, uh, present and paying their money to get in at the door, so it was pretty exciting to see all the enthusiasm. Um, today is voting day and I hope that everybody goes out and votes for the candidates of their choice. Wednesday is the Dr. Seuss reading. I'll be at Epic School at eleven o'clock on tomorrow to, uh, and I have my hat in my car, Council Roberson, so I'm, uh, I'm fully ready. If they make us wear those wonderful hats again, I've already got mine and I don't need another one, I already have two. Um, Neighborhood Meetings, Forest Park, South Avondale is not meeting tonight since it's voting night, they have put their meeting off till next Tuesday, March eighth at six thirty PM at the Avondale Library. Uh, next Monday, Glen Iris meets, and because Forest Park has moved their meeting, it now conflicts with East Avondale's Neighborhood Meeting and Highland Park's Neighborhood Meeting. So that's gonna be an interesting night. Thank you, Mr. President, that's all for me.
Councilor Boy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly can appreciate getting out of this meeting early.
Amen.
Bless you.
Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Um, Fairview Neighborhood Association meets on Tuesday, March the first, six o'clock at the church at Fairview, no, at the Five Points West Library. And the Thomas Neighborhood Association will probably not meet tonight at six thirty because they have a, uh, it's a voting, uh, poll. So, uh, I'm almost sure they would not be having a meeting tonight. Uh, the next Public Safety Transportation Committee will be on March the seventh, uh, at four thirty, City Hall Chambers here on, in, on the third floor. Um, I think I heard the mayor said, women, this is Women's Month, I think it is. Well, every day, well, you're right about that. Certainly in my household. Uh, and maturest too. Every day, every day. Every day. But, uh, for sure, you know, sometime you have to use colloquial vernacular. But, uh, it's appropriate. Uh, but anyway, um, uh, I just wanted to share with you, you know, I told you last month was Black History Month and I gave you that, but my cousin, Dorothy Yancy, uh, who was president of two young institutions, Shaw University and Johnson C. Smith, and was, uh, made president emeritus in those two institutions. But she also, as I was listening to Commissioner Moore, she was the first female commissioner of the SIAC, um, um, as- association, um, in, uh, in that area, in the, uh, Charlotte area. So she, you know, she does some stuff, and then I read yesterday, she just formed, uh, formed a firm for, uh, retired presidents, they've started a, a firm, a search committee firm, that she and some of her colleagues have, you know, who, those have been great presidents of our institution. And now they gonna have a, a, a firm that search out great leaders who want to lead our institution to the next level. So, uh, she's always, uh, doing, uh, wonderful and great things, so I just wanted to share that since it was about women. And, uh, and want you to know that the woman I live with is also was inducted to the, um, the Honor Society at, uh, at, um, Birmingham School of Law. So she was inducted to the, yeah.
Congratulations. We should give her a hand, it's real sweet.
Women, women. How women. Women. Thank you.
Councilor Tyson?
Thank you, President. Oakwood Place meets at Harrison Park at four. Mason City Neighborhood meets at Hamilton at four thirty. I had opportunity to serve and actually cook, Councilwoman Abbott, at Arlington Rehab Center on, was it last week? And their dining is called fine dining and it is definitely a fine dining. They had the best food, um, the best, I didn't know chickens could taste so good.
They let you eat?
They, I cooked it.
I think she just got some.
Yeah. And they had, um, fish and potatoes and vegetables and it was just three different desserts and, um, beverages, they had about four or five different beverages, it was just really nice, uh, over there at the Arlington Rehab Clinic and we just had a wonderful time. But I really enjoyed it and I'd like to thank the staff for, uh, city council staff for getting that together, it was really nice. That's the end of my report.
Mr. President?
Councilor Wood?
I, I did want to mention that, um, Brittany and her, her team, uh, and this kid and all them, they were really wonderful last night. Um, it was just a great, uh, panel. Uh, wish we could have had more folk there, but, uh, but it was a great, it was a good crowd and, uh, they did a great job. And so kudos again to the, to the women and, to, to all the women in Chaz.
Mr. Chaz.
Mr. Chaz.
Councilor Scales, you have one more thing?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. And Mr. Chaz.
Okay, uh, Councilor Lundy, you got something?
Senior moment. Senior. Senior moment.
Senior moment.
Senior moment.
Senior moment.
Senior moment. Senior moment. I want to thank, uh, Councilor Parker, uh, and Mayor Bell for meeting for a second time with Hooper City. Uh, Mayor Bell, uh, by his, uh, being in attendance, it assured us that we had a, a wonderful meal present for the meeting. Uh, the folks really enjoyed it and, uh, they got a chance to speak with the chief executive of the city. Uh, I'm grateful to the mayor that, uh, he made some promises to the folks and I'm just excited that we're gonna see, uh, some of those things addressed in Hooper City. Also, I want to thank, uh, John Archibald. Uh, John Archibald continues to make me a superstar by way of the pen and, uh, I couldn't pay for the kind of advertising that John Archibald gives me, so I just want to tell him thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Start over.
He is just a sweetheart of a gentleman. We've never met, we've never talked, but he loves me so much that he puts me in pen and for that I am ever grateful. Thank you, Mr. Archibald.
Mr. Protem?
He's a great friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um...
Thank you.
Uh, Stop the Violence Program was outstanding on, yesterday at Carver High School. I truly enjoyed, uh, speaking to, uh, the students there. Uh, thank you for the invitation, uh, to the administration there and the teachers that had me involved. Uh, what was significant also, uh, as I saw the pastor speak earlier during her, uh, speaking, uh, the speakers, uh, we had a meeting in my district at, uh, Pastor Patrick Sellers Church, Mount Zion, Sunday evening, uh, about addressing violence in our community. Uh, over sixty black men, uh, from different walks of life, uh, came together to say, we're gonna hit the streets. So that's actually in line to what, uh, the pastor was saying earlier. And, uh, there will be some, uh, work done and those men actually showed up yesterday, uh, about ten of them to, uh, Carver High School, so I'm truly thankful for their support. Um, you know, there are some significant stories around, um, the Alabama High School Athletic Association Basketball Tournament this week. And, and one in particular involves, uh, two of my constituents. Um, the head, uh, men's basketball coach at Huffman High School is Steve Ward, who was married to the head girls' basketball coach, uh, at Homewood High School, Javanka Ward. Uh, this is the first time in the history of the Alabama High School Athletic Association Tournament that we have a married couple to make it to, uh, the final four, the semifinals. Uh, so I want to wish both of them, uh, luck, uh, on the games. Uh, I know both of them, uh, Huffman plays Homewood Boys, I'm an alumni of Homewood. Uh, my daughter, uh, who is number three, will be on the court against Huffman Girls, uh, on tomorrow afternoon. But, uh, it's just great to see, uh, well, we got a ring already, by the way, we are state champs. And, uh, we, we are champions in District Seven, so, uh, we know the girls are playing also tomorrow, uh, in District Seven. Uh, they play tomorrow afternoon, so it's gonna be exciting time for District Seven, uh, at, at the BJCC Arena to see, uh, great coaches, Emmanuel Bell, uh, Steve Ward, uh, Javanka Ward, uh, and we believe champions are made in District Seven. So looking forward to the tournament, uh, on tomorrow and for the rest of the week. And the Roberson family will be there at least by the hundreds to be at the BJCC home this week. So it's exciting time and, uh, for our family and good luck to Leah, uh, good luck to her team as we look to, uh, repeat and as we, we know the girls look, look forward to three peating, uh, on, uh, this week. Outside of that, Mr. President, um, Neighborhood Meetings, Jones Valley will meet at six o'clock at Thel Mc Catlin Auditorium today. Uh, Monday, March seventh, we'll have Pauley Neighborhood Meeting at four o'clock, Resila Neighborhood Meeting at six, and Wes Goldwire Neighborhood Meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Champions are made in District Seven. Thank you.
Councilor Scales?
I wanted to respond, you know I got to respond to that, Mr. Protem, but NFL stars and basketball stars, NBA are made in District One, so we actually get paid. And so, thank you, Mr. Protem. But I wanted to make sure that, um, you, miss, I wanted to make sure about the governmental affairs to announce that we are having a meeting, special call meeting on tomorrow that's gonna be at, uh, four PM, Conference Rooms D and E, so I wanted to make sure that we made that announcement, Mr. President, unless you, you can tell me otherwise. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Scales. Uh, only announcement, College Hills meets Monday, March seventh, six to seven PM at JCCO. Um, do we have, I, I want to thank Officer Lewis from the downtown substation.
Do we have, I want to thank Officer Lewis from the downtown substation, Officer Stinson from the West Precinct, and Officer Powell from the West Precinct for providing our security today. We have a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.
Yay.
That was pretty good.
What time is it?